All right, there we go. Mark, can you hear us? Yeah. We're all together. All right, there we go. All righty. Mark, can you hear us? Yeah. Mark's the only one out there on the TV. Let's see here. Oh, we got the meeting out of. Can you hear us sexually? Let's see here. How about that? Hey, Mark, say something now. No? Hold on a minute. Perfect. No? Anything more? Good. I can go back on you. Thank you, Mark. We just want to make sure before we get started. All right, so Anna, I'm going to take the statistic screen.
Okay, I'll try to.
I will move this one over here just to see if somebody joins. All right, so it is, we did the part at seven and six. And now we'll begin the regular meeting, probably in two hours. So to review and accept the minutes for four twenty-five, did you guys get my markups?
Yeah, I thought those were good. Yeah.
Yeah, I had two comments that you gave to.
I guess.
I guess two. Okay, so you got Bob. My comment, right?
Well, I think they were your comments that you gave to Bob, right?
Bob, did you take my comments and then give them to Ella? Yeah, yours was snacked up. Well, as long as we know we've heard it, we're.
The version that.
Oh, Bob, did you look at my comments? Yeah, and then these are your comments. Yeah. Okay, so you edited what I had. This is what you came up with. Okay. I'm fine either way, I guess. There was one date I wanted to make sure we checked.
Yeah.
Why am I getting feedback? Oh, no, it's not muted. We have to mute it. All right, so that looks good. I want to do a motion. And when we took the meeting, or equal twenty-fifth, is amended.
That's good.
On favor vote, okay. All right. Let's let's get over maps and get back to it just because Charlie's here. We get him in and out of here. So at the last meeting, we talked about Seven Lakes Alliance applying for some grant funding as a result of short of watershed surveys. And the Seven Lakes Alliance thinks that we can get for one of these grants forty-five thousand and the other grant. And yet.
I'm sorry.
And the other grant has twenty-five thousand. If I'm remembering correctly. And what Seven Lakes Alliance was looking for from us, just to refresh everybody, was that whether the town would kind of support that effort by, you know, us signing. And the only thing that I added to what Charlie sent was, he'd said the town is prepared to support this. And I said, if the voters approve at the June twenty twenty-three town meeting. So in other words, this will be supporting the effort of Seven Lakes Alliance. And incidentally, Charlie talked to Lee as well. Yes, and Lee, Lee understands that if we were to get this grant and the town votes, we'll spend that money next spring, that we would be getting half of the road repair for Cottle Hill Road for free, basically. It's not a cheap bill, so people will still have to vote on it. But that's essentially, we're just putting our support behind it because Charlie's going to get the the grant application this week. Yeah, so, yeah. But, yeah, did you guys have any questions or concerns?
We sign these letters of support for Seven Lakes Alliance grant proposal.
Second. All right, on the favor. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie, for bringing this together.
Alice, I have the original. If you don't want to bother, you don't have to bother scanning them. We can just print out another original if you want.
The motion was that we.
That we that we sign the.
The motion was that we sign the letters of support for the Seven Lakes Alliance grant proposal. I think that was the proposal.
Okay. One and you. Well, no, no, they're two different ones. Two different ways. It's okay. I got I got the original. Send it to us.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Let us know how it goes.
Will do. We won't know about these until we'll be putting in the application next week and keep finding out by October.
Great.
Where we stand. They don't go into effect till next.
We'll know by May first next year when they put it on the board.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll let you know this fall.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you, Charlie. Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye, all the way.
All right, so.
And we change the order of the agenda and pick up on the business this time with some people here.
Okay, are you guys all here for the same other business?
Except for Peggy, she's here with Trish. Trish gets her.
So Peggy, you're here. What what's the business you're here for, just so we know?
Echo Lake Road Dog Set Lounge and marking at the stop sign at the corner of Sandy and Echo.
All right, so we'll get to that. Barry, what's your business you want to bring up?
I want to present the board with a hundred signatures plus get a moratorium on solar farms. Every day I find out new more more stuff on the solar farm, and I want to know if that can be either on the.
Okay, so hold on a second. So hold on. So are you guys all right with we'll change the agenda order here? Yeah, all right. So first of all, this this wouldn't go to us. This would go to Rachel Heather.
That's already.
It went to Heather.
Oh, it did. Okay, so you you run it through Heather.
And I want to know if it can either be put on the town meeting or whether you'd rather have that at the elections. I found out more information today that having problems with the cell phone, with the channel, they're running out at seven years or only, they're losing sixty-five percent of their.
So the details don't matter. What matters is, Ken, that's your your underguy thing, if you don't mind me paraphrasing, is that are you able to get a warrant article for town meeting for a moratorium? That I think that's. Okay. I think so.
Well, that's. I don't need a thing, so I need it most so.
No, I mean technically, we're not done with the warrant. So if this is gone through.
It can either go on the warrant or the ballot. She hasn't done either one of them yet.
Yeah, well, the warrant's not done yet, so it's not too late for that.
Well, I thought I had to present it to you.
Yeah.
So I want to make sure both of you get, because I know a lot of people who.
No, it's certainly it's certainly timely, Barry. So I I think what we'll do, if it makes sense, you guys, I'll talk to Heather in the morning and we'll figure out the best approach. But either way, citizens that get, just for the record, ten percent, the amount of signatures would be ten percent of the turnout of the last gubernatorial election.
Which was only four thousand.
People turned out in twenty twenty, that means a hundred legitimate registered voters' signatures, so.
And he has over a hundred.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, yeah.
Okay.
I'm just not I'm just not sure which Heather might have.
Well, you said that the last week, there would be something on the town meeting, so I put up a sign for a vote. I want to make sure people wanted to know, the people I talked to, so I put that up.
Sure.
I need to know that, so if I have to change the sign, so. I mean, there's a lot of people I've had.
What's your preference, Barry?
You know what I don't want. You know, and I gotta say, I know how you and Bob feel, but I gotta say, when Anna said she didn't want it on the farm lands, that was something she was worried about.
Yeah.
Made me happy, because you know, that's forever.
Well, I think, in my opinion, I would just simply put it on the the warrant. We have the other article and the warrant at the same time. That way they wouldn't conflict. And I think it's important for the public to know that a moratorium can be done for various things, that it's only temporary, that you can't just say a moratorium forever. I haven't actually read the wording of this, so I'm not going to hold people up to do it. And I'm not going to render legal opinion. That's not my job, but but because there's an article in town on the town meeting warrant, there will be for the new ordinance, it seems like that would be the appropriate time to discuss the two of them. That's just my opinion, just for you guys' record. Because there's something to be said theoretically for one approach versus the other with no, if this got voted down, just so you guys know, if it got voted down and the warrant article for the ordinance got voted down, it would essentially leave us wide open for anything. So the way that the warrant article, the way that the ordinance, I should say, is written, and I'm not here to advocate for or against it, I'm just giving facts, but the way it's written is it would put pretty significant limits on the size and the location of solar farms. They they use two things in that ordinance. One of them is farmland of statewide importance, which is the state thing. They designate certain land in every county. And then the other thing is statewide importance of the other one, though.
Uh, significant.
Yeah, so there's kind of like those two categories. So the ordinance itself, in my opinion, is actually very restrictive because it would take somebody like, just just to use for the sake of argument, Julia Hall would only let her use, what is it, like twenty percent, ten percent, whatever the number, it's a pretty small percent. Lacking an ordinance for a moratorium, it means that she could, you know, do five hundred acres. You'll have you'll have farming then right here in Mount Vernon.
Yeah.
So one has to be careful, so.
I'm just hoping we can sit down as a town. That's my thing, is like on homes and garages and that's fun. As a town, we have a unique town. We don't want to ruin this. I'm going to live here permanently two and a half years, but I've been coming here forty years, and I can't see where anyone wants to destroy this town. It's such a beautiful town. What these other places have, you guys, you're going to get money from it.
Just because you seem to have a coalition of thought, just want to let you guys know that if this passes and the warrant article for the ordinance fails, you're still stuck in the same boat in a couple of months' time.
Yeah, well, we'll be back at it again.
They're asking for five-year moratorium.
Oh, yeah, I don't think that's possible.
That means you can't even put them on your garages.
No, no.
No, 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 no. No, no, that's commercial. That's commercial.
Well, we don't have to, we don't have to make a value judgment.
Yeah, commercial.
It's not our job to make a value judgment on the on the, you know, petition, tradition of the petition.
The new ordinance is it gives forty-three percent of prime farmland to towards that of that twenty percent.
Well, in any case, that's not debate whether we like solar or don't like solar.
I'm not again, I'm not totally against solar, but like I said, I like it on the houses and all that. I've talked to people and I said, but CMP and them, they want the big projects. And and they can, they can get the same thing, but we're going on houses and garage, but they don't want, they would have the big project. If that land's gone, that land is gone.
It's a legislation.
That's right. Listen, land is gone, you'll never have another use.
Okay, so.
So I appreciate your movement. It's up in the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, no, no problem. You got it in just in time, Barry. So there you go. So we'll just have to figure out the order of it. Now, I'm not here to make, I haven't I haven't read it, and I'm not going to make any opinion or value on the language and whether it's legal or not legal. Okay, so I I don't know about, I know, I just I just want to make a similar point, but when we did the cell tower ordinance, we ended up doing a moratorium on that, and there was FCC rules that governed it. It could only be for a maximum of, I think it was six months, you guys remember?
Yeah.
So there may there may and may not be. I have no idea. You know, some maximums. So whether or not the actual language, you know, complies with state law, I have no idea. Maybe you guys researched it, maybe you didn't, but if you did.
Get people research.
It it could be, you might want to research it between now and then. But i- i- if it ends up being, I mean, you can't change it. It is what it is. I'm a people's side. You can't change the words later. But if if this passes and the language of it doesn't comply, I don't even know. So we're all collectively going to have to figure out what to do, you know?
Right.
So that's all. All right, you're good. Thank you.
Can I, can I bring it up? I don't know. I don't want to stay here till twelve o'clock like last week. A couple of our neighbors, it was funny, I was talking to them this weekend. They're all coming in, Paul.
Yes.
Were asking about annual reports, wanting to see one, and I don't want to get anybody in trouble.
We put them on a lot, but they don't get them mailed to them because we mail them to residents. What we do is we use the, we have a bulk mail thing, and it all goes to Mount Vernon residents, but every taxpayer, anybody in the world, as soon as this thing is out, we'll be able to see it on the website. You can see last year. She can see the year before. Well, some of these taxpayers that are not resident, if they come to town hall, we'll give them one. We're just not mailing them to everybody's home.
Well, I'll tell them that. If you have a gift, like you get it.
No, we don't.
Eighty issues. They were asking, I go, I'll say something, I'll say.
We do always, we always get extra, so somebody can.
I'll tell them they have something to get.
I'm in at the.
Just look at the recycle bin. They have to send that out. There'll be like a hundred right there. So, yeah, that's not a problem. It's all public business. It's all online, so.
Anybody else who got something to say?
Well, there's.
A lot of roads, brothers.
Can I bring up other business sites, what Barry talked about? Okay, the Calvin on Bean Row.
Oh, yeah.
Guys, my property analysis.
Yeah, yeah, we've talked about that before.
Last fall.
Yeah.
I think it's springtime. Might be a better time to see if Dana, Dana.
Lee.
Lee can do anything about that because, like I said, I report it a lot and the water's pretty high right about now, and I don't know how much of that is covered in water now, so if I wanted to, I don't know how that's going to go.
All right, so the bottom line, the cover on the Bean Row that we talked about before, just around the corner. Yeah.
Somebody's dug it out.
Yeah.
I, you know.
And so that was, was that remind me, was that as a result of the ditching that they did and?
No.
No.
That was somebody else was over there. I'm sorry, Bob.
Does it name us?
Oh, your neighbors across the street.
It goes to my neighbors.
Ah.
Somebody.
Yeah.
Because it was fine for years, but uh Mr. White did that road a long time ago. It was perfect, you know, the water would run, now it's it's not even running on the other side of the road, so something's happened.
Wait, did the guy across the street clogged it up?
I can't say because I didn't see, I mean, it was.
You just know it's not flowing from your side to his side.
Out there one day, uh a piece of equipment.
A backhoe, rather similar to mine.
Right, so. Well, I I thought Alice was cleaning up the brush, but apparently it's not Alice's and and it's it's deeper, you can see. One other question also.
You're on a roll.
Did they, thank you. Does he need to have a, a new driveway, because he just put in a new driveway?
Well, new driveways require permits from the uh code enforcement officer, so if you think. A driveway that went in, that wasn't permitted. Tuesdays, you know, Tuesday is the day, the CEO's here.
I'm I'm off tomorrow.
Small town, okay, then they're listening, code enforcement doesn't go around looking. All you do is find trouble, but if a neighbor says, hey.
There's certain instances you need a permit for a driveway.
With every instance in this town, it doesn't land.
I taught from reading the land ordinance recently.
Yeah.
That you have to abide by the driveway permit description.
No, we actually, I if I might be remembering incorrectly, but I'm pretty sure we changed the ordinance two, three years ago, that you have to.
I might be referencing the nineteen copy and I think there's some updates, but I have I have invested in driveways and roads.
Yeah.
So.
That probably would need it.
How where you are, nobody's gonna notice.
Right, yeah. Yeah, well, you gotta abide by it, unless you're in a lake zone or.
So if a new driveway went in.
It'll be it's.
That you think was inappropriate or un- or you think is unpermitted, all you have to do is call the CEO in the morning and ask.
Yes, look, we just, we we could. If you go on the Mount Vernon Town Order and then just to got documents.
Do you have driveway?
I'll email him, no, just code enforcement, and by the way, uh we, this doesn't apply to your case, but.
I'll email.
State highways different.
That's the easy.
That's a state permit.
I'm not sure when he's getting that, but I'll email.
Yeah, he's just gone this week, I forgot about that.
And the planable, what did they need?
The planable, you don't have to go into that.
Well.
That's just code enforcement.
I'm sorry, what's his name again?
You could probably email him, you might be reading an email while he's away, I'm not the oftentimes, so.
My my culvert needs to be replaced on the horn, it goes from Warren Hill to my property.
No, he, but he told me he has to put it in.
Yeah, yeah, but we need to get that on the budget or whatever.
No, Alice, are you getting the minute?
Yeah.
President Alice states that.
Oh, I wanna I wanna, well, we got what you just said about let's pave the road first. Let's not pave the road first, let's dig the culvert out and then pave it, so we don't have to dig and pave that up like they do on Route forty-one.
I'm glad, I I'm glad you're being so stupid, thanks. Alright. Are you good?
I'm good.
Alright.
Want me to go home?
Would you please? Alright, well, thank you guys for your input.
Bye, Barry.
Alright.
Am I out?
Because I'm always so clean-shaven and now it turned into. I haven't, I haven't had a shave or a haircut since January.
Your wife must love it.
Yeah, well, today she was telling, how long are we gonna let that thing go?
Alright, so uh let's call the meeting back to order.
Sorry about that. So I'm Peggy Link, ask her for those that don't know me, um I'm here to assist Trish, the animal control officer.
Okay.
And I've called her several times because of stray dogs on the Echo Lake Road.
Oh.
Um she has responded, she's really fantastic, but she also has done some research. Um she called me on a Thursday, the Monday before last, because I showed up last Monday thinking you guys were meeting. So I was the only one here, so Trish thought you, it was last Monday as well.
Oh, no.
So I'll be here this Monday as promised to Trish.
Yeah.
Because what's happening is we have bicyclists, um joggers.
Yeah.
Regular folks walking with baby carriages and their dogs are running free. So Trish showed me the ordinance where it says voice command, none of the dogs are voice command. So my issue is, I do not want the dog we just adopted from the Humane Society. It's a giant Alaskan Malamute, he weighs a hundred and forty pounds. Okay, he's huge and everybody comments when they go by, but he came with us with issues.
Yeah.
Um and we knew that, and that's why when Augusta called us, they knew we lost our Sammies. So he said, would you take this dog because we can't place him, so we did. And that was a year ago this February, so we've been training him, even though he's five. He's still very protective of us and these dogs are coming into our yard. And this dog is on a cable right now, which my husband has now ordered airplane cape. And a lead to hold him back because he snapped the cable twice getting to these dogs.
What help if we put signs up or something?
Well, Trish said.
Problem is, you're not gonna like catch, if you will.
Right, and and the folks that I've talked to, even though some are nice, some are not. Saying Mount Vernon doesn't have a leash law.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Mount Vernon doesn't have.
Name does.
It's a staple.
That's what I'm trying to explain to them and they say no, so then one of the gentlemen who. Is here early for the summer camps, stopped and said, do you realize the counselors can bring their dogs now?
Oh, great.
So I realized that last year because we saw a high frequency of joggers with their dogs.
Ah jogging around the lake.
They're jogging around the lake.
Wow.
Now, I'm trying to prevent our dog from grabbing these dogs.
Right.
And doing injury, we don't want that, and I try to explain this to people. But they're not grasping it, I get the verbiage, there's no. There's no teeth in the laws here in Mount Vernon, and number two is. That because we are a dirt road Echo Lake, that it's not a town maintained road. So I stopped the truck and said, this is a town maintained road. On that post down there next to the stop sign is a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, which no one does, that's not why I'm here. So, um. They're saying, no, it isn't, okay.
So one thing you said is true, and we're this time not in a position to police. Or did you take a lease law, you take anything like that, there's nobody to call.
Right.
I mean, if there's animal abuse or whatever, ACO is fine, she takes care of that, but.
Yeah.
You just can't catch people.
You can't. You can't.
We can only try to influence them, so I'm just wondering if, I'm still wondering if some kind of signage or something.
Well, that's what I.
It's unfair for you to have to counsel everybody.
So I said to her, can we put up a sign, and she said, she came and spoke with Heather.
Alright.
And she got a copy because she had an old uh ordinance from the animal control. So Heather gave her an updated one, but it's still not enough verbiage. She uh had the verbiage from Wilton, because she's an animal control officer there as well.
Yeah.
And from a relative from Portland, and they had stricter verbiage that she would like to put on a sign.
I see.
So I said I would come tonight to bring that up, to see if we can do something, probably not. I live on, but the other people seem to be coming forward, saying that there's a lot of dogs at large, because.
Could I make the suggestion to you?
Yes.
Um my suggestion would be you have a a warden in your neck of the woods, Ethan Buck.
Yes, he's very nice.
He's a, he's a nice young man.
Very nice.
I believe he might be able to tell you what you can and can't do in that.
Okay.
Situation.
Okay.
Um he's. And I wouldn't, and I don't, when one of us a police officer, at least I don't think we are.
So Trish, getting back to Trish, thank you for that, though, getting back to Trish, she thinks. Grated.
Um so instead of relying uh more on the state law, put it in our ordinance, what you're saying. Well, we, I'll reach out to Trish, doctor about that, it would, it wouldn't be something we'd be able to do for this year if.
Right.
Oh, wait a minute, it that might be the kind of. Board votes on.
Right, yeah, you didn't pull it out, did you? The ordinance, did you pull?
Well, look at that, there's some ordinances that the select board votes on, don't go to town meeting.
Yeah.
Others that the town votes on, so like land use has to be counted, so we'll look into that.
Okay.
Then we could ask the ordinance review committee to look at that, look at the state statutes and see if we can get enough of that, the meat, if you will. Look after Trish about it.
Okay.
To see if we can get it in there, but meanwhile, maybe Ethan Buck to uh.
I will, he he. He talks to us quite a bit, just to visit, and he knows the dog.
Okay.
Um. That would be helpful, thank you, I maybe even give him a thought.
Maybe, he he would be very interested.
Well, listen all, you better be kidding me.
Yep.
I don't think this is our current ordinance.
This is.
This is the current?
Yeah.
Seventy-three.
Yo.
So.
The thing is, Ethan is probably very, would very much like to have it stopped too, because dogs that aren't under voice command very often are chasing wildlife.
Absolutely, and yeah.
It says, no owner shall cause or permit any dog to run at large.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I know, and so I don't know where it's rumored that we don't have a leash law. Because it doesn't state leash, I I don't know.
Okay. For the people that don't understand, running at large, supply is not on a leash, unless the owner is running at large. Um alright, so here's what we're gonna do.
Okay.
I'm gonna talk to Trish.
Alright.
Get her opinions and viewpoints.
Yeah.
Um you gonna talk to Ethan or?
Yes, he stops by quite a bit.
Yeah.
Um on his way going, you know, from Sayet.
Why don't you give us a call, give me a call, you know my number, and just see what you find out from him.
Yeah, I will.
Yeah.
That, that's great, thank you.
Meanwhile, if you determine that it's nineteen seventy-three. You know, if we determine this is the most recent, then absolutely, uh hold on, Mark's tech man, I wonder if we lost something.
Lost something.
Uh uh Mark looked up something on the state's website, thank you, Mark. According to seven MRS subsection thirty-nine eleven, quote, it is unlawful for any dog licensed or unlicensed to be at large, except when used in hunting. End quote, seven MRS subsection thirty-nine oh seven defines each to be, quote, off the premises of the owner. In other words, they can run around your yard without a leash.
Mm-hmm.
Not under the control of any person whose personal presence and attention would be, would reasonably control the conduct of the animal. Local ordinances might require the dogs to be leashed, so that that does still say that under vocal control. But if they're running into your yard, obviously that doesn't apply.
Because the folks are jogging or biking.
Of roadways, right, it's off their property.
Right, right, so.
Okay, Mark, oh, so so I was an ACL for three years for Mount Vernon, so fortunately. So at large, it's like it's control is the key word on that, you have to have control, voice control. And that's a sticky point sometimes, that's where, that's where, yep, that's where the problem's gonna come.
So Trish goes and talks to the person, they'll be like.
That's what she's running into, yeah, yeah.
Well, either way, now, public, you know, and this, you know, we'll have. Hopefully, more people start thinking about it, at the very least.
Right.
But I understand what you're saying, that in the summer. Next thing you know, there's gonna be thirty dogs running by your house every day.
Right.
Yeah.
What happens if her dog attacks and kills one of these dogs, who's responsible?
Question for animal control.
Yeah, so it would be.
Make sure your dogs.
Yeah, oh, he's hooked all the time, yeah.
I know, yeah.
Right, he made sure. So he's got a clip on him that they use for scaffolding, the security clip.
Oh, but.
So you have to pinch both sides to open it.
Yeah.
So to make sure that he can't get out, because harness is a Shetland pony harness. So, yes, we've made sure of it, but what we can't control is the traffic going by. The foot traffic and the biking and trying to get him to ignore it, which he is going to. Uh Merrill's K nine Academy in Greathfield, so we take him to classes to make sure that he's social. And maybe try to ignore, he'll ignore if we're outside, but when we're in the house and he's outside alone is the issue.
Yeah.
And we can't be outside.
Alright, thank you, we're gonna, we're gonna move on, but thank you, you know, you know my cell number, you can text me.
I have an. Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you for that as well.
Alright, so I think we're back to town audit update, so uh before leaving an answer where we're at. Just for granted, I went back to look at our select board agendas from last fall. And I didn't look at them all, but. In my bootcase somewhere, I guess, but we were talking about getting this scheduled in October, because last year. We were down to the wire and RHR myth did not perform for us, that's like the context. Our aggravation right now, we don't have the audit time, so what did you find out?
Well, so I, I'll stay and I do have the draft from the first year.
And from twenty twenty, but not twenty twenty-one.
Because they can't finish the twenty twenty-one until they finish the twenty twenty, and the the twenty twenty, I was going over it. And they had, um. It was very, it's hurting me actually, because. Because I went up a bunch of things that, uh second collections and they, she promised to get me the draft. The short financials, um not the sixty pages, but the short version of it tomorrow. As long as I got this turn, I did send it on.
So the short version of what we put in the town report, that's for twenty twenty?
Yeah.
Now, hold on a second, so when they say draft, that means we can't publish it till they say they sign off on it, correct? Is that just to make sure we agree, or what is the purpose of draft?
The draft doesn't have the full nine yards, which will not be finished tomorrow.
Right.
So they they can't say undraft it until they have the full nine yards, which should follow up fairly quickly from this, but.
What about twenty twenty-one?
Okay, so let me finish this, they uh they had five. Five areas that we overdrafted, and I went through, like they had, we overdrafted snowmobile. So I've gone through and I, I pointed out the article in the warrant that said no, the snowmobiles, it's the, so at that year. It was up to five hundred dollars of what the state made, so that's not an overdraft.
You'd say in the twenty.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty, right, fiscal year, we didn't say all the snowmobiles, but we always said the first five hundred?
Yeah.
But we gave them more than five hundred?
No.
Okay.
No, we gave them five hundred.
We didn't overdraft it, they just. Okay, so that's one thing, what about the other?
And they, we had an article, we had a special town meeting in November or September of twenty nineteen. And I sent the minutes to them again, but they were on the website.
Yeah.
Um because we had municipal building capital. Um, because we had municipal building capital fund twenty-two thousand in the warrant. We added an additional ten thousand because that's when, uh.
Yeah, we did the front work, yeah.
Yeah. So that's not an overdraft. We had a special. So I went through those and then I pointed out the article, uh, they had us overdrafting planning board by a hundred ten dollars. But we have article thirty-nine, which says no, you use the, um, income from fees. So that's not an overdraft.
Okay, yeah, I agree with all that.
Yeah, so they only potential overdraft and I don't. I don't really agree with it, but they went to, the trio said we have eight thousand three hundred twenty-eight abatements. And that is more than what I had picked up, so that might be an overdraft.
Uh, yeah. That's not a real significant finding.
No, no.
We budget ten grand for abatement, but when they come in, they come in.
Uh, yeah, and then it said we were one thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars overdraft.
Right. I don't even know if that would matter. Cause you, you can't forecast when you're doing the budget, how many abatements you're gonna get.
Technically, you're not supposed to overdraft anything. That's the article in the, in the warrant.
So what they're saying is we'd have to have a, a vote here to use the contingency fund to rectify that.
Right, and I'm saying.
That's fine, if that's what their recommendation is.
No, but my, my thing is they had us overdrafting when they weren't overdrafted at all.
So those are the early findings from the twenty.
Twenty, right. So I got the explanations to those and I should have the short version. I'm going to try and convince her to take the draft off because they're, they're finished, essentially.
So the million dollar question. Not even a sixty-four thousand dollar question. Is, can we get the twenty twenty-one audit done in the next three days?
No.
We have to have it before town meeting.
Yes, I understand that and.
We better to call him and.
They will have it, um, it will not be in time to put in the town report. But what I will. What I will do is. I should have pushed harder, um, I will pay for the mailing of the twenty twenty-one.
Well, no, it's not that, Carrie.
You have to have it before the town meeting.
A month before.
Well, I will double check the time. It has to be before. I don't know what the number of days, but we'll double check.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so, if you had to guess, yeah, but they've been working on the twenty twenties since November.
They had absolutely everything by January.
Yeah, so how long is it? It's gonna take like three or four months.
Today, in talking to Samantha, she said no. Wrapping this up, because they have everything, but they can't wrap up the twenty twenty-one. She said it should be. A week to a week and a half to get the twenty twenty-one.
I started calling their office. No one answered.
They're not working the office.
I called them from three o'clock to almost four thirty, that's when they closed. I sent them an email, finally. I haven't, I haven't heard a thing from them. Now that's ridiculous. Today.
Cause I talked to, to Lindsay and.
I should call early in the day, I guess. If, if they don't answer again tomorrow, I'm gonna drive down to their office.
They're in Windsor, right?
No, Buxton.
Buxton?
Where the heck that is.
Are they working from home or are they working in?
So who's doing the twenty twenty-one?
Twenty, they have, do you have, like, four different people. There's Samantha, there's Lindsay. There's Amy Hadlock.
Don't know the specific, is it usually a specific one doing? Well, she's the lead, right?
Tell me who. I think Samantha's the lead. Samantha Ruckles, Ruckles, R U G G L E S.
Uh, so I will look up, you guys, looking at the town meeting election manual right now, but. I'll find out. Uh, it's a, any requirement other than the minimum seven days, which is the warrant requirement for town meeting, for the town report. I think it just has to be by town meeting. I don't think it's a month, actually. The warrant is seven days.
Right.
In fact, you don't even have to put the warrant in town report, but it's tradition and we always do. But we've had last minute changes. We had one a couple of years ago where we had a big whoops and. I literally posted the new postings around town at like eight fifty-five A M Saturday morning, the week before town meeting. Cause there was a whoops on one of the articles. So we already know that the posting of the warrant is only seven days. So we, we did have to check on the town report, maybe we can buy a little bit of time. The good news is, um, John Haglen will print it again for us. He does a great job. He turns it around in a couple of days, so. Um, you know, it's not like we have a three weekly time to get it printed, so we'll check into that.
Yeah, well, it's, it's up to you and I'm more than willing to do.
Thank you, I'm worried about when we get it. Yes. But yeah, I actually did find, I do have it, October twenty-fifth. Twenty twenty-one, status check armed, annual audit scheduling. We started, that week, we started talking to these people.
No, why didn't we have last year's on time?
Last year's, we got the day that we were heading out to the printer and come to find out it was.
Yeah.
And that's why we gotta publish two this year.
We gotta publish two this year.
And that, that was my fault because I was in. In the rehab and right here, and I had been working with them and we had a lot of stuff, but. They called in here to get the audit.
Well, either way, R H R Smith knows town. They know what our programs are. They know what our deadlines are.
Yeah, and they must be doing a ton of towns.
They can't do it. Why didn't they tell us in October? We don't wanna work for you guys.
June is the big month for town meetings.
In my opinion, we should just find out whether some people work from home.
Right.
We need to know what other auditing firms charge because we may wanna up our budget.
Yeah.
Before we finalize the warrant and fire these guys.
I'm really very. Um, surprised too because it, it's some of the things I found like this, so.
Right, that they should be a little more familiar with, yes.
But that's one of the things about staying with an auditor because you have some of the background there.
Right, they're like, oh yeah, that's that thing.
July first, you call these guys, they're ready to start the damn audit.
Well, she won't be ready.
Actually, Carrie and I talked about this. Basically, you need a month to close the book. Get a change.
Yeah.
Make a change. So Carrie, we, what did we decide? By?
September.
First of September.
I need to. Yeah.
All right. So basically.
Yeah.
Month and a half before we started talking to them. I mean.
Yeah.
The actual work is like, what, thirty, forty hours? We're not talking about thousand hours of work to audit our books. I mean, it's a million dollar budget, that's nothing.
Yeah, otherwise, how do you?
Other auditing, yeah.
Well, they did send, um. They did send a person here for like half a day.
Yeah, they don't spend less time.
They're making us do most of the work now. Scanning things.
Yeah.
I have to scan like.
Used to be that they would come in, we'd clear off this table.
Yeah.
We'd set all the papers up, they'd go through them, they could ask for this, ask for that, ask for that, then they'd be gone. And we get the damn audit done.
And you're paying the same amount a month.
Yeah, right. All right, so, Alice, did you have a comment?
Well, I wanted to ask if I could have permission to ask for the, the reports for this year. Maybe in, uh, August, instead of waiting until, you know.
Oh, I see what you're saying from the various committees.
They have that information and it's fresh in their mind.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a good point. So the select board should take that up this fall, this.
Very good. I write mine as soon as I can because otherwise, how do you remember?
Well, what I do personally, I've had to do, I think, five of these as chair, but I just go back to my emails. I don't delete any emails, it's all there. And I go back to, uh, meeting, um, agendas. More so than minute, just to pull it. I'm like, oh yeah, we talked about this, we talked about that. Next year, we're never writing select work, wanna talk about the flood here, town hall, for example. Yeah, it's things that happen during this fiscal year. That was a big deal.
Yeah, it was.
So it doesn't take a lot for, if you, you know, especially us, because we have the email trails, everything we've done. You know, at least things that we've communicated in email, always right there. I don't find it that hard.
Want to say thank you to Alice for having all the, finding all the minutes of getting them back upon our, you know.
All right, so Bobby, you still intending on talking to them as well?
Yes, yeah, I gotta make it, yeah.
Known that we, we're.
Right, so if you're gonna do it, I'm not going to.
Yeah.
And are you checking the number of days, Paul?
I'm gonna check the number of days.
Okay.
So I better write it down, number of days. For report. Hopefully it's kinda, hopefully it's kinda just say seven. It says thirty, that means we have to finish the damn thing in the next couple of days.
Goodness to the printer.
I know. Tomorrow, the next day. Last year, I looked at my email, we were still working on the fourteenth. And I believe it was just one day different timeline in June. Anyways, all right, uh. Status check for the website. I won't take a lot of time. Alice helped me today. Um, I have the technical contact. Scott and I were looking at. The I O S of web hosting deal and. Um, so one thing I want you guys to know, I looked at I O S, our, our renewal for our current web hosting is actually July first.
Oh.
Good. Well, yes, revised the new website posts. Um, technically, they're doing work in advance of the fiscal year.
Right.
With the intent of us going live around July first and then them billing us, because it's gonna be in the budget for the next fiscal year. It would be nice, in my opinion, if we go live a few days before that and we won't redo web hosting with the current host.
Right.
And at the same time, it's Scott's preference to move the domain hosting, which has nothing to do with the web, just where the registration is for. W W W dot, not the actual site. He wants to move it to GoDaddy because he works with a lot of other domain registration. And which makes sense, I use GoDaddy. I own it from where it was when I got here, I never really cared. So we're trying to. Alice gave me the technical contact and we're working with them. We also found out that. Um, the fire department wants to move their website. Um, I don't know if you guys know, but the fire department website was done by Stan Hateman.
Oh, jeez.
A long time ago, in like a really, I mean, it's like playing Pac-Man. So they're like, they're done with that site. So, um, we're gonna be able to make a page for the fire department or any other town committee.
Each.
Right on the new website. Yeah, and then, you know, the fire chief, the chairman of this board, the chairman of that board, all have their own login. Update their own info. Um, but the fire department also has their own domains. I don't know, they're not really married to it, so. We might end up, if we, if they keep their domain, we're gonna see if we could forward it to our website. But actually go to the fire department page, so Scott's trying to figure that out now. Anyway, it's no big deal, but we're just trying to figure out the timing, yeah.
I didn't hear back and they said it should be no problem to get the website go live before July first.
Awesome, that would be good. So I will make sure that I get things canceled. On a related note, I sent you guys all an email, making sure that. You're all done with your old email. Um, everybody so far is good, so. Um, we paid about a month for those email accounts, so it's my intent by the end of this week to just cancel those, we're not paying for those anymore.
It works for me.
Everything that moved over. Alice made, well, I lost a few groups, but that has nothing to do with the actual email.
And less sub folders, but I got them.
Oh, you did? All right, so that's it, um, new website, let somebody else have a comment or.
No, thanks for.
All right, so warrant work, um.
Three days.
It's three days?
And reports merit discussion in this manual because they're an element of preparation for any town meeting, so required by law to be made available to voters three days. Before they.
Three days, wow, we just bought ourselves a couple of weeks.
That's great.
Uh, we just have to remember that the actual warrant is seven days.
Yeah.
If we're literally down to the wire for three days, it's no big deal. We just post the warrant in the four places we post for it. Okay, and that, the center, the library, out here at town hall, and a copy of.
I assume that's working days, right?
No, just days. Every day is working day for us. It just is, yes. Yes, you're in the public sector now, Alice. Um, all right, so. Uh, we kinda talked during the, um, the warrant session tonight at six thirty, but, cause a few of the salaries that were. You know, we're not directly putting on the front page of the warrant, as we discussed, but just so you know, I know you're interested. Um, starting a few years ago, we, you know how we always used to show like. You know, the cleaner gets paid extra for hour up to a hundred hours a year. Gradually, most towns don't do that. The reason why they don't do it is throughout the year. Things can change, but you're handed in by that.
Right.
So what we did a few years ago, we took transfer station out. Thank goodness. And what happened is when the, when the, when the budget for given board entity, whatever, transfer station, we say for sake of argument. Uh, you know, they have an overall budget of a hundred and sixty thousand, let's say. If you put in there that the salary is fifteen bucks an hour, maximum thousand bucks. And then, you know, COVID hit and everybody cleaned out the garage and we need more hours out of them. You're, you're stuck, unless you go to a special town meeting. So when you don't put the actual salary and the actual hours in the warrant. You got wiggle room because maybe you're not, um, you know, filling up the chip pile, so you have money to work with. Um, so. The wages this year going up in the town, in the, uh, in the budget, obviously.
Going up everywhere.
They're going up everywhere. I can't hire people. T-Mobile advertises thirty bucks, uh, twenty bucks an hour. Kid right out of high school, never worked a job in their life, twenty bucks an hour. So we're afraid of getting handed in on a lot of jobs. You know what I mean? So we're trying to take the ones that don't really need to be there. We'll probably leave Rachel, I mean, uh, Heather's, because she's a Sally, which we better back this up, you know, so there's a few of them that might be there. But for the voters, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have another little sheet. If anybody wants to know what we're budgeting for any position. How many hours, you know, Alice, us, anybody, will have that information right at our fingertips. We're just not gonna vote that. Alice gets paid three hundred dollars an hour for a hundred hours a week.
And that's all she can ever get?
Yeah, that's all she can ever get. So anyways, um, so, uh. Um, yeah, so you, uh, you're gonna, uh, Carrie, you're gonna. Why don't you just go into this version of the checklist and do what you think you need to do? We just need to make sure it's in the overall budget. And the ones that we're.
That's when I want you to.
Yeah, allow me to open it. You want, I gotta get a quick drink of water.
Have a what?
That's the coffee of this.
No, I don't.
What are you looking at? Uh, I can pull up what I have.
Oh, okay, good.
All right, so.
It's looking real good now.
Yeah.
I only had a couple of.
So I think a lot of what you were talking about with the salaries and everything, that's way over my head. If there's something specific you want in the minutes, you know.
Okay, we can take, I'll, I'll look at that part when I read them and. And edit if we, or add this, add if we have.
All right, so. Uh, when you go to the checkpoint site, just go to town meetings. And then budget sheet. No, we're just, you can just say in the minutes we work on the warrant.
Alright.
Alright, so we just pull this up.
I'm gonna fix a couple typos.
Alright, so. Oh yeah, thank you, Bob, or what do you guys notice, I accidentally left, yeah, last year's thing, so. And when we actually had missed tax, yeah, so I got that in there. So those are the things we're voting on. So town meeting, just for the record, I'll see that, see that. Anna's in there now too.
I'm just editing.
Multiple people can edit the same file, the same file. Well, you just click on it, boom, there you are, online itself, one click. You can also download it, so if you go, uh. You can go, uh, up here where it says editing.
Yep.
And you can open it in desktop app instead of on the web version of Excel.
Okay.
Either way, you're still editing the same file that Anna's also editing.
If you download it, though, you're not.
Well. No, it, it, but it can be funny sometimes, you gotta be careful. Actually, let's do this, and I, I'm gonna open it briefly, stay in there, Anna.
I'll stay right here.
Okay, I'll open a desktop app, let's see what happens. Opening it, up, opened over there, come on, move it. It appears here.
Now, does this, if the two of you who are working from home, could you be doing this simultaneously?
Yeah.
Doesn't that constitute a. Quorum?
Hmm, we're not making decisions, it's just like.
Well, I mean, because I know if two people are in the opposite, that's a conflict.
Well, what it matters is, if you may.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, Anna and Bob meet at the cafe, and they hand around a decision in a public meeting.
That's a problem.
That's a problem. When we, the committee, we always put it on the website that the budget committee, so we're covered. Um, sometimes the select board, not recently, but in the past, has had to have emergency meetings. And, I don't know, this came from Bruce, from people before me, that what we've always done is if it's an emergency meeting, we've always emailed to KJ, we always know who the. City desk editor is, or whatever, hey, FYI, we have an emergency meeting, we'll put it on the website. You know, you gotta have it, if you gotta have it. So at least we've got a record, like a paper trail, or whatever. Um, I'm not gonna open this here now, because it's asking me to re-authenticate, I don't wanna take the time to do that. Anyways, it's possible, I'm just gonna go resume here, so we keep working. Alright, now, my side is crazy again. Alright, uh, so anyway, technically, town meeting starts, just for the record, um, on the Tuesday. At eight AM, because Tuesday at eight AM, yeah, Tuesday, I want to remind people.
For the voting.
Tuesday at eight AM, the first thing that Heather does is we pass out like five little slips of paper. The select board has already selected a moderator. Now, incidentally, Steve Hayes has agreed to do, be the moderator again. I promised them it would be more entertaining this year than ever. Now I find even more entertaining. Uh, so luckily, he's agreed to do it, just FYI, so we have him lined up. So what we do, at eight AM, I usually show up to make sure somebody's there, we're gonna have like. Three or five votes, or whatever, you write down Stephen Hayes's name, hand him in, boom, we got a moderator elected. That's before voting even happened. Then, the voting happened. After Article Two, we essentially are pausing town meeting until.
No, that's the election, not town meeting.
No, it's actually the start of town meeting, technically. Yeah, that's why I'm going through the whole explanation, but, yeah. And then Article Three, this is a traditional thing, it doesn't have to be any other way we say it, but because we know that Heather and Rachel. Don't live in town and don't have the right to speak at town meeting, we specifically off. Let them speak. Now, for additional people who don't live in town, but for whatever reason we want to let them speak, we also would have to vote on that. The only exception that we've made, whether it's legal or not, sometimes glad-handing politicians will show up, and. I don't personally like to give them the form regardless of their party, however, what Steve Hayes, who's a lawyer, he's very astute about moderating law. He, he, he's the decider. So sometimes we'll say, oh, you know, so-and-so's here wants to say a few words, you know, so if they are an elected official already. Steve usually will let them do it, what, one round break, beginning at the end, it's really up to the moderator. But anyways, we know that Heather and Rachel may want to speak, so we have an article for that. And then we're just, this is tradition, that we always vote on whether manuals in play, Steve has a copy of it on his iPad. So if there's a, if there's a challenge to a decision that he makes, Steve will go to the main moderator manual, per this, if we vote for that. And that'll be where the rules, you know, are, are set. Um, and Steve's very good, as you guys know. Uh, before him, we used to have, uh, uh, Richard, uh, he was good too, what was that guy's name, Richard, uh. Anyway, he was good. If we couldn't get Steve, you know who else loves doing this, is, uh, Paul Mills in Brownington. Uh, he loves doing town meetings.
He's always volunteered.
Is that what my rate is gonna be? Is that what my rate is gonna be, thirty-seven cents more than I get that?
There you are. Alright, so, we'll get, we'll add to your pressure, but meanwhile, I think the ones that. If, if we decide we're gonna leave them here, certainly tax collector clerk, because she's salary, you know what I mean? The hours doesn't matter. We're officially putting the word salary back in there, we've gone back and forth, and I think we all agree that. She prefers salary, and we don't wanna be micromanaging her, because she doesn't report to us, and whatever. So I think we all agree that it's back to salary. Is that the, is that the number? I almost.
That's thirty-seven cents more than what I make right there.
I'm not sure it's the right number. If you wanna go to salary work, you can have.
I don't think that's the right number.
Salary work.
Yeah.
Okay, and. Admin assistants.
What we have in the salary, yeah.
If you go over, you can see where it was proved, so. Leading a forum. Or she came in with the.
Let me see if I have my, uh, budget.
Heather came in with the hour request, if I remember.
That's right.
Yeah, but the admin assistant doesn't report to Heather.
No, but Heather presented the request increased hours.
Yeah, wasn't Alice the same pay as the deputy?
Hours from the plan.
I had no, I don't know if I have.
Eighteen sixty, so.
It doesn't sound right to me.
It wouldn't let back up stuff.
I don't think I have it either, uh. Well, we'll have to look for our notes from that budget meeting, and Katie would have it, I'm sure. Well, we're all updating separate copies of, of the budget at the same time, I might have a separate copy. Alice, another hundred hours.
Yep, we have, we increased the hours.
So is that in here, the extra hundred hours?
Yep.
Yeah, sixteen sixty-four versus fifteen hundred.
Alright, clerk, assistants are clear, twenty hours, elections, that'd be Oregon ballot for. Uh, it's funny, I had Alice another hundred hours, but.
Yeah, I think that's what I remember too.
Oh no, here, here I have over here, assistant, it was eighteen twenty-three, I put an hour to eighteen sixty times third hours a week.
Yeah, thirty-seven cents more an hour.
Yeah, we're giving everybody two dollars for them.
Well, here's what we did, no, it wasn't even. In past years, we looked at consumer price index, which isn't a good indicator this year, actually, probably is, but it's traditionally like two, two point three, two point five, two point seven percent. And, um, what Mac had liked to do over the last couple of years, and others before him, um. Was do a cost of living increase, however, the budget work we did this year, we realized that cost of living wouldn't cover everybody, so we looked at individual position. Each and every one of them, this, by the way, is exactly what I'd say at town meeting. Um, and we made adjustment. Position, and based on what prevailing wages are for a given position, it's never about an individual, it's not about what Alice makes, it's about what admin assistant makes. It's not about what Heather makes, but what a clerk. And, yeah, that, the eighteen sixty is what the budget committee came up with, um. I'm not exactly sure, I can't remember what the comp was. Well, it used to be like. Well, then it was like thirteen or fourteen.
Wrong business.
Maybe it might be, still get a retirement job, though. But yeah, that's what the budget committee came up with, I mean, Katie might have some more backup. We, uh, yeah, a lot of the positions are, are based on what other towns pay, so we do salary surveys like that, so. Um, the towns that have town meetings before us, it's really easy, or we just ask them, you know, we do some informal salary survey. We didn't do it this year, but MMA also has a salary, uh, table that I've used in past years. Um, actually, two years ago, I can, I can pull up the sheet, I have a, but a sheet that looked at retail, Wayne, Sayet. And I talked to the town managers, and every town, they're all the wages, and, you know, we, we do baseline salary surveys like that.
But yeah, I'll look, I'll look at that too.
Yeah.
I'll get that too. I'll check.
Alright, so let's go back to the warrant, uh. Oh, so, but actually, while we're here, by the way, when we get, when you take a number like. Uh, like this. That's based on what's on this sheet, but that's, this salary worksheet then feeds into this sheet. If you look at a cell on this sheet, like this one, it's referred to salary work, such and such. So this sheet, salary work feeds into the budget top level. Budget top level feeds into warrant, so if you click on this number here, it's gonna say top level, yeah. So that's why I didn't want to just like randomly go changing things that are on the front page, you know, without making sure. Select board can remain here, yeah, and the select board, we're just keeping flat, we just made it.
So admin assistant, you want to take.
Eleven dollar adjustment, or whatever, to make it an even four thousand. I mean, for the last couple of years, you know, the theory was, oh, let's do the two point three percent, I mean. It's not, it doesn't mean bad, I mean, it's a half volunteer job, you know, so I don't like seeing. You know, nine hundred doll, nine hundred eighty-six thousand twenty-three cents, hell, just another thousand, you know? And, you know, it is what it is. It's treasurer, though, I can't remember if that's one of the ones that the budget committee, we were talking about, not. Voting in this way, I think, I think we're gonna take it off the front sheet for the same reason. And if we had, to have enough theoretically, enough money in, uh, administrative budget, that our worst case scenario.
Right, that should be coming out too.
Leaves, and we find out, oh my God, we can't find anybody, anybody that'll do that particular job for that particular money, then we're screwed. We'd have to go to a special town meeting, right, you know? We might wanna take, we probably should take Alice and Carrie off for that same exact reason, so we're not, stop at that, right, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I think we should.
Admin and the tax collector.
I do think that. It's showing a different selectman each four thousand, select chair.
Right, yeah, that's fine, no, we should go on that, that's fine.
Okay, so admin assistant.
And by the way, when it's spelled out like that, nobody can make an amendment higher, right, if they wanna amend it lower, they can, right? People at the front table might disagree, but, but you can never amend higher, that's the other thing about a warrant. If, if the dollar amount says specific amount, you cannot amend it higher. If it's an article, hold on, if it's an article, like some of them later. That says to see what amount, blah, 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 select board recommends X, then you can amend X up.
Because there was one.
It just depends on how the article's written.
Okay.
So right here, the citizen town will vote to raise money for cemetery, recommended, you can amend that up.
Yeah.
But if the article was written to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate three hundred and thirty, thirty-three hundred fifty-nine dollars, you could not amend that up. You have to say, to see if it, you have to say recommended, boom.
Yeah. Because there were, there was, there was one that I was surprised on that was amended up last year, it was the hospice, went from eight hundred to a thousand.
Well, they were handed in last year by the year before, did we just have a typo? Oh, that's right.
Yeah, and I didn't question it, because I.
Well, talk to the, talk to the moderator.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, we asked the moderator, I remember that discussion, we were like, it's in the.
Alright, so anyway, back to this, in my opinion, we should take administrative assistant and treasurer off here, and secondarily.
What I'll do is.
I'm gonna check his notes too, to make sure that.
Yep.
Budget committee thought that the administrative assistant should be making hourly rate.
Okay, uh, what I'll do is I'll put a separate page that takes the feed, so if we change the baseline, it'll.
As long as the overall budget is whole, that's why I didn't wanna step next to this.
Deputy tax collector too.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we should.
Alright, so the other positions, I believe we got filled in at what the budget committee talked about.
Yeah, I double check.
We used to pay literally minimum wage, most, most of these people are volunteers, they don't even care, but, you know.
Of course, they care, it's around the skin, two dollars increase to everybody.
Well, I mean, the, the fact of minimum wage.
They want to keep their employees that they have.
Yeah, but the fact of minimum wage, like last year was like fifteen, now it's more like sixteen or seventeen, it doesn't matter what the state minimum wage is. You can go. Okay, so you can't hire people from minimum wage or two, three dollars beyond that, you couldn't, you know?
I've been three years looking for an employee, and I can't find one.
Exactly. Alright, so I think all this stuff is good.
Okay, so that should all be pulled out.
Right, yeah, so these two should be pulled out, yeah, not right here.
Actually, should none of them.
Should all be pulled out.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you don't.
Okay.
That's what, it's still what the budget was based on, and so that's what people get, we want to do the.
Alright, so the only thing that's really important for us is stuff we pull out, I, I wanna make a separate spreadsheet with a printout.
Yeah.
And if somebody asks, we haven't rated our fingertips.
And that's why I said, I'll make it a separate sheet, so that it just.
Yeah.
Beats exactly the way these are.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, man. Alright, so the administration takes into account a lot of stuff, including a lot of these salaries, so. This goes to budget top level G thirty-three, budget top level G thirty-three, right here. And that is a summation of thirty-three fifty-four. Thirty-three. Fifty-four. Of that. Okay. So, ah, so that's a summation of this number. All the way down to this number.
And. As you get down some, everything, this is the percent increase, but this.
Alright.
This actually is very important, because that's when I can tunnel them all up and quickly do the only one, cat, the relations or whatever. So there were a couple articles down below, that I actually pulled the recommended out, so bring that, the amount over into that column.
You'll mention that when we get to it. So I don't wanna go through this all tonight, we'll be here till ten, but. Every one of us should look at the formulas, make sure it all ties out, but you're, you're confident in it.
Alright, but, but if you notice on the, the lower ones, I have little, um, checkboxes that. Over to the right, that if something doesn't add up from the lower, it flags it. And so that's what, what I did with this one too. I didn't have it done, because there were still some things that we weren't sure of.
Alright.
So I didn't feed everything down here.
Alright, so that's the high level number, two fifty-four, legal fees, does elections tie back with those new wages?
Yes.
Okay, contingency, municipal building. The municipal building, is that where the CMP builds go?
Yes.
And we factored all the high rising prices in there, right?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, assessor. Oh, I forget if one of us. I forget if one of us. My first one. Did we double check with them? I think one of us.
Yes. Yep, I got that.
That's the twenty-seven.
And then tax maps, you know.
Yep.
But they were, yeah, Andy can probably do it for fifteen hundred, but whatever. And then they, oh, Bob, you had enough, you updated that.
Yeah, cuz they're so.
Yeah, alright. And then CEO, that's based on his new whatever. Alright, so. There's nothing for newsletter because we don't pay for it as a separate job, but what about postage? We just have that under the general ad.
Yeah, we. The newsletter, we didn't footage anything, so we can if you want to.
Well, I mean, eh, when Alice sends the mailing out to people that wanted it in the mail. She's feeding it to that machine. It's probably like what eighty cents or something? I don't know.
It's seventy-three and it's going out to one hundred and eighty people now.
Or a newsletter.
A hundred and thirty people.
No, no, I mean the ones we print out and mail.
Hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty are getting out in the mail now?
Right, so we need to.
I used to have like twenty.
She did get some, uh, newsletter revenue in.
Yeah, I saw.
But we probably should. Put something in.
Let's talk about the revenue then. If we get more advertising than there. It goes to the general fund by default unless we put a warrant article that says. Any newsletter offset mailing costs. Should we do it? I hate to make a hundred articles, but.
Article thirty-nine, I think, is.
Yeah.
And that number is kind of a lot, I'm sure, just people sign off every day.
Should you know what the cost is for one mailing?
One mailing, seven three cents.
Seventy-three cents. Well, there isn't an article thirty-nine, yeah?
There isn't. What is, well, that was last time. A search for planning or search for.
More people signing up. This one.
So you wanna put newsletter in there?
Yeah, wouldn't that work?
So Bob.
Revenue's.
On article thirty-five, we'll just add the word newsletter in here. So if they get revenue for ads.
Yeah.
We can offset postage.
Yep.
Okay.
We found rid of some articles as well.
Going down.
But you might wanna put some money in for newsletter though. If she's mailing out two hundred of them.
Right.
At seventy-three cents.
Oh, that's fine. We'll still put, we'll still put.
Yeah.
Cause otherwise I can't.
Not enough ads to offset.
Right.
This morning.
So.
So newsletter, what do you want? Uh, two hundred?
Budget top level.
Two thousand dollars?
Yo.
I mean.
Be one forty, one, one fifty times twelve. Eighteen hundred, so.
Yeah, two thousand and, but we don't do twelve, we do ten newsletters, don't we?
Well.
No, well.
We started doing.
I do know every month we did one month, we doubled up.
Yeah.
But it was.
We started doing that. We added it back in cuz we're thinking, oh, it's online, but.
That's not, there's a lot online we've got.
We shouldn't try to talk people into getting our own coffee. But.
Wow, this is, this is one way to give the info out though.
I know, I know.
You know, someone sign up for it.
Alright, so let's put money in here then.
Eight hundred bucks.
Otherwise, we're taking it out of some of them.
Eight hundred, three thousand.
Two thousand.
Yeah, we can adjust it next year.
It goes in admin.
Admin.
So does that retotal here?
And you have to go down to admin.
Oh, no, we're there.
Unless you.
Wait, I just put it right here.
No, no, no.
Get it out of there?
Yeah. Undo.
Yeah, you do.
I'm fixing it.
Is on the same sheet?
Town newsletter. Here we go.
Oh, different town.
Yeah, because anything in the top level budget, it's up from below, so you don't have to.
Good night.
Thanks, though.
Okay, so admin, if you love the newsletter.
You put in this yellow column, right?
Yeah.
There we go.
You only put numbers in yellow. Don't check.
Well, look, it asked me if I wanted to see changes over here. I can see Anna just did that.
There you go.
Takes me right to.
Thank you, Anna. You're welcome.
Alright, so back to warrant. So is it gonna auto populate?
Yeah.
No?
Not yet. Maybe I need to like click away from it.
Okay. Show me the cell.
Oh, wait, I'm on planning board. Alright, here. Budget top level.
But you, you changed the top level, so go to budget top level cuz it pulls it from there, but that pulls it from admin. And it's still there.
Okay, so let me just look at where we wrote this. Okay, equals admin H. Okay, so Anna, just go equals here. And then click on admin and click on that cell. So you're gonna have to use to do Excel all live.
I'm sorry. Okay, all fixed. Really good, but that's one of all the extra check boxes to double check my.
Alright, so here you go, property tax abatement, who the hell knows, right? So we got, we got ten grand in there.
Town match grant, what's that?
Oh, that we.
We get a grant.
Every single year we took that in there. Now, by the way.
And every single year I have.
This is something that in the end we can decide. You know, we'll have time to think about this even after we publish it. And. Because of other things, if we decide, well, maybe we shouldn't try to set aside two thousand. I'm not saying this is something we should do, but just what if? Um, you know, we can always lower that. Right? Because of the other expenditures to try to get closer to the L B ones.
Yeah.
But just keep that.
Okay. No. No.
Um, so municipal capital improvement. Uh, technically, we have a bunch of money in there now. But. You know, we'd be remiss if we didn't keep growing it.
But sometime.
Like when we needed a new roof.
Yeah.
We still didn't need that enough.
Windows should be changed at some point.
Always something, so, you know, if, if we're really trying to. You know.
Yeah.
Give things down later.
Yeah.
Think they're on the chopping block. I, I shaded these two because I wasn't sure why they're in here.
Yeah, that's, eh, like I said, this was the warrant from last year, so.
So if I just delete the whole line, it won't screw anything up, right?
Um, no, but you'll have to.
You wanna do it?
You'll have to put the number, the eight oh one, cuz that'll.
No, I think it'll auto retable it.
I'll fix that, Charlie.
Oh, wait, I did delete one. Hold on. Let me undo it, delete the one.
You did something.
Tragedy. Control Z, control Z.
Alright, it'll work. So you just had this thing that did the plus one thing, so if I just take these two.
Take out the rest, delete rescue and then type eight point oh one on fire rescue.
Okay, so we're gonna delete this row. I shouldn't be doing it in the online version. I do have a hard time. So.
Type in eight point oh one.
Eight point oh one.
And then go down to the next one. And. Um.
Okay, equals, okay, equals, yeah, I got it.
Cause she deleted the line that was referencing.
You've all been there.
Cool, there you go.
Fixed.
Alright, Bob, did you get that?
Yep.
He's ready. He's on it.
Uh, alright.
Okay, the only thing I have on that one is if you scroll down a little bit more to health officer.
By the way, are dispatch fees direct in here?
Yes.
I think so.
Right.
To our knowledge.
Ambulance.
Yeah.
I know we went over this in, in the budget meeting, but.
Now, how are we dealing with hu- house? Health officer. There's no money in there for pay. That's only for a lab.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, so by the way, I know we have Betsy in the way potential Elizabeth.
Dan's repliring.
I have a name too, if we have to.
Um, but yeah, Wesley was also noodling around, so.
Yeah.
I think what Elizabeth said was, at the very least. She would take the position on paper cuz we have to designate somebody as health officer cuz of Dan's retirement. Um, but if it's somebody that wants it more, I believe that she would be happy to work that person.
Well, I don't know if John Gaspere would do it.
Well, I asked him, I asked him fifteen years ago. He used to be my doctor. I gave him a heads up in the future. I'm gonna come ask you. I don't know if he would or not either, but he's another guy.
Yeah, Pat Ross brought his name up.
Yeah.
Mike Wensel did it for a long time.
But the rescue like that, that'd be either medical advisor or whatever.
Yeah.
I don't know about the first one, but.
Well, what he does is he goes, uh, uh, when they have that meetings, they go through their runs. Uh, and explains what they did at, at each call. And he basically listens to that and then.
Well, I don't think that, so right now, yeah, we still worry about it.
Okay.
The best in my opinion.
Okay.
Alright, so transfer station.
Yes.
That was based on where the run rate was looking like.
You don't need me for this, do you?
Uh, we do need you. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You do need me.
Yeah, we do need you, yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, we definitely.
Offered flowering, oh wait, we were gonna check cuz he, he was, he did a flat budget as I recall. Um, we're, we're gonna double check.
It's not checked?
Yeah, wasn't he flat across the three years? And I think this assumed a, a two point something. Offered flower. Oh, right here. Okay, here we go, first one. Doesn't, didn't look right. Yeah, uh. Eleven thousand two hundred. So eleven thousand two hundred. Uh, I believe you have to change that somewhere else.
Yeah. Thank you.
Even had Anna.
Yeah.
Eleven thousand two hundred. And then next year, he goes up. To eleven thousand three hundred. Big deal.
And the smoke cloud contract, does that? Okay. This has been a increase. So here we are, Daisy Mae here.
Daisy Mae. Double check Daisy Mae though.
Do you know who Daisy Mae is?
Definitely. Uh, two, two fifty-eight, five fifty.
Fifty-eight, five thirty?
No, five, five, oh, so we gotta fix that one too. Two five eight, five five zero.
Okay.
So line one twenty-five, Anna.
One, eh, which one? One twenty-five?
Just see where that one goes.
Okay.
And make it two fifty-eight, five five zero.
Two.
I think the day we were in budget meeting, we couldn't find the documents.
Yeah.
Okay, snow cloud contract was staying, uh.
Well, yeah, so this one.
Oh, that'd be as one hundred.
Eleven thousand, is that what I said?
Eleven thousand two hundred.
Two hundred.
Two hundred, okay.
Eleven thousand two hundred.
Okay, fix that one.
I'm sorry, there's the gas.
Yeah, no.
Is it a gas contract in his place?
No, I'm thinking, it's just, he's a little guy, so he may not have.
Alright, and then you got, uh, this one. Two fifty-eight, five fifty.
Okay, and that should be.
Well, you gotta see. Top level something.
Yeah, and then we go to public works, each thirty-four. Okay. And what, two fifty-eight, five fifty?
Five fifty, yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna see if change when she works.
Oh, there you go.
There you go.
The magic of. So. Alright, so we got that. I think we're good on the rest of that.
Okay, now we have to add the apron.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, oh, wait, actually, we're not good because backup, and I can do this cuz it's, it's a little poogie. If you go back up, um, eight point eleven station maintenance. There were two new line items that were added that didn't feed up the fire gas temperature system. Cuz those were new, so.
Oh, maintenance is spelled wrong.
Wait, what, what tab are we looking for?
Eight point, no, atop of horn, eight point eleven.
Oh, wow.
There were actually two more lines that need to be pulled in.
Oh. So missing something there.
Yeah.
Eight point oh nine maintenance is spelled wrong.
Oh. Well, that's pulled from down below.
Yeah, we could do a spell check. Eh, you have to go to the other tab to do it.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we're two items missing.
Yeah.
You gotta do that?
Yeah.
Alright, we gotta talk about these road budget. I almost forgot. He absolutely does not agree. To take anything out his budget.
Right, no, I, I made a mistake. I didn't, I have it marked down too. You should have a fifty K for the engineer in nineteen K for the.
Yeah, nineteen two thirty, I think it was.
Yeah.
So where are we gonna put that?
Actually, the fifty K we didn't have in the budget, right? We had his budget, but we hadn't added the.
So do we wanna separate our? So that, Bob, I think we should.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's not do it now to draw slate, but let me just make a note. I will edit that in tomorrow. Yo, there's something else we're gonna do. Those are acceptable use. Alright, so. Add. Article. Fifty K. Road. I'll run the language by you guys. Alright, we won't wait on that tonight. And then the nineteen thousand two thirty or whatever.
Yep.
I think. Excellent. Actually, I, I pulled it up because it was on the top level budget. And it should be. I pulled it up to. Um, ten point ten. Fire station tourniquet, twenty thousand.
Oh, okay, so, uh, is that in the top level budget to pull up or it needs to be added to top level budget?
I, it's in top level budget, so it just needs to be pulled into the warrant.
Okay, so you're gonna do that?
Yeah.
Alright. So, so Carrie, let me make a list. So ten point ten is what they want or two. What ten point ten is gonna be which one?
Uh, the fire station tourniquet.
Fire station tourniquet.
And you're gonna add the article for fifty K.
Right.
For the wording, but you wanna make sure recommend and put the, put the number over in J.
I got it. I got it. And the one in eight, in eight point something, which of those two articles?
That was the eight point, uh, after eight point eleven, it should be eight point twelve fire gas temperature system. Sixty-five hundred and eight point thirteen is the water hole maintenance and development thirty-five hundred.
Okay. So it's in the other budget, just not over.
Yeah.
Over, okay, I got you. Alright, um. Well, we also mentally thought some time.
Actually, it was article eleven where you're gonna put the, uh.
Yeah. Yeah, I can do that. You can sticker it in there.
Yeah, so the article for the fifty K road, yeah.
Oh, yeah, fill that little space.
Okay, perfect. Alright, um. I think we're good on all this.
Uh, library, forty-five hundred dollars? That's not right.
That, it's not right, and actually.
Should be fifty-three thousand.
Actually, I changed a lot of that because. It's, if you look. Athletic isn't carried only, uh, at least by the budget committee. They didn't ask for anything, so we probably should just carry.
Right.
Okay. But the budget committee, the sheet that they were working on has thirty-five hundred and athletic director stipend a thousand.
Twelve thousand five needs fixing.
Yeah.
Okay, Carrie's gonna do that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Let's keep moving.
Because it isn't pulling these.
It's not pulling the right number, yeah.
She won that.
Normalville Cemetery, Bob, I think I updated that number, thirty two fifty nine.
Yep, that's correct.
Revenues.
I fixed why.
It says travel rate, I thought we, weren't we gonna go back to the same state rate? No, this is lower, right? But we're gonna.
That's what state rate is for reimbursement.
But, should we put state rate, or just leave it like that? Cause what if state rate changes?
Yeah, I I kind of, I kind of like setting it here, so that you know what it is.
So we're just gonna leave it, that's fine.
But that is the state rate, and they're just slowing, catching up with gas prices.
All right, I believe I checked the date. Okay, I made one change here, fire, rescue, transportation, cemetery, public assets TV I added.
Yep.
Cause we've been carrying it, but it wasn't in here. Beach and road accounts. Okay, everybody agree?
Yep.
Okay. Interlevel agreement, fire ordinance stuff, blah blah blah. But these numbers for all these organizations, correct?
Yep.
Okay, Bill and his team are meeting as we speak.
Okay.
That still noodling around with language, I have been, though, theoretically. Bill and Chuck, Chuck, been doing a really fabulous job, in my opinion. Thinking out what the impact will be, and it really doesn't look that bad. Ostensibly, it's a twenty year bond. And we can, they've got a spreadsheet, the the entire export of trio. They know exactly every single taxpayer, every single lot, and they know whether those people are cabled or uncabled right now. There's a very detailed analysis, and I think they're gonna be able to show the taxpayers when they vote on this one article, whether they're gonna be paying more or less for internet than they pay now.
Geez.
So it's one thing for people that don't have broadband, with one at this table, for example, and many others, hundreds of them. They're all gonna love it no matter what, because they're gonna get proud of it, but for the rest of us, what do we wanna know? I'm paying seventy five a month, is this gonna save me money or cost me money, right? I, I, people might still vote for the better of all humanity, but I don't think everybody is out, because that altruistic is nasty. So, what the, uh, broad broadband committee, I think will be able to show is, if your house is valued at three hundred thousand, let's say, in the tax, uh, the taxes, additional taxes on a monthly basis, that you're gonna pay is, whatever, I'm gonna make up a number, let's say it's twenty five dollars. And we're gonna know about what this broadband subscription fees are, let's say they're forty five dollars. You take forty five and twenty five, you get seventy bucks.
Yep.
I think they're gonna be able to show on paper that it's gonna be about a net breakeven, but it does assume a certain subscription rate. What does that mean? Well, what it means is, uh, if not enough people subscribe to this new service, you know, maybe it's not gonna be so even, but part of the emphasis for the broadband committee is to nail down what the subscription fees are, what the assumptions are about them, so your taxes will go up, your broadband fee will come down, you may or may not pay more, you might pay less. And you're gonna go from like a hundred meg internet to, you know, up to a gig or whatever. So anyway, they're working on that right now, it's gonna be up to the town, but the article's not quite done yet. So I will be flipping that to you guys as soon as I have it. This article, it's really up to us. You know?
Yep.
So, my opinion, it, that's the number one purpose for that.
Yep.
You know?
Right.
It really is. Then we got the Blake Hill Bridge Road, so I don't know if you guys saw the email. Very good.
That was great.
It looks like you you can't just be coming in under.
Under just above. Yeah.
Thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So I think by us looking for two sixty, recommending two sixty, you know, we might not need two sixty.
Right.
But we'll have that if if this is how it gets voted in, right? Uh, maybe we only need to spend two thirty, two forty, two fifty, not sure, but it looks good.
That that's the one where I ended up pulling the the two sixty over column J.
Oh, right, okay. Is that how we've done it farther up?
Yeah.
All right, you wanna just do that? Oh, I see what you're saying, like these ones, okay. Uh, I can do that, or any of us can do that, so number thirty four, move two sixty over to column J. All right, I got you.
And it just, um, stated as promised, sixty percent participation recommended through taxation, and then the two sixty.
Okay, got it. All right, so revenues, audience review, planning board newsletter, appeals board, we have edited that.
Should you add, uh, CEO? He receives money.
Oh, code enforcement, as a separate, yeah, that's a good point.
Uh.
Yeah.
Nah.
Yes. There you go.
Okay, so driveway permits.
We're gonna change the fee schedule.
Yeah.
And we're waiting to coincide with when we put the new land use ordinance out, just so it doesn't confuse people. But the fee schedule is going up, because it's costing us more to for what Bill's doing than we're getting in revenue, the whole idea with the permit fee is to cover the cost of building.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
But I just wanna make sure, um, we have building permits, plumbing permits, some of those we have to turn some money back to the state.
Well, that's okay, we're not gonna steal from the state.
Okay, yes, land use, driveway, junkyard, those all, those are his new.
All right.
I I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, I think we're good. We can, new around on these couple missing things, and we're getting really close, now in the end, uh, we're gonna need, Alice knows more about this, but we're gonna need to take the, uh, the formulas and convert them to the values, right?
Yep.
And I think Alice is planning on doing a table in Word with all this.
Yeah.
So. You know, she knows what to do, but ultimately, if we, if we just take this stuff, we can't take the formula, we gotta save it for value, so. Alice, if you do that, uh, I would have one favor, take this, take, make a copy of it, and leave this original with all the formulas. Otherwise, we won't have it next year.
I went next with that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I think we're good on that topic.
Do we know where my percentage is on how many hours I have left? But it worked, it's like in here? No, this is a separate budget.
Zero. That's a good question, she's got a lot of work. I don't wanna have a special time meeting like two weeks before it's happening, yeah.
I can look up the percentage and convert it to hours, hours.
All right, so. Other business.
I have one more.
Yeah.
I did double check, and I looked at all the calculations with payroll management. I think they put in three thousand, but actually, when I do the dates and put against all the current payroll, the number of people we pay. And we comes out again, two thousand eight hundred thirty seven, I think we should keep the three thousand, I think that's very much.
So, it's in the administrative budget now, at that rate?
Yes, at three thousand. I have to say, oh, okay.
So, you need to buy peach tree, and you need to buy three thousand for the payroll service.
No, why would we need to buy peach tree?
Peach tree used at all, in the process?
No.
All right.
It won't be.
Okay.
After July.
So, with payroll management or paychecks or any of those, we're just entering everything direct, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. They all work the same, you just, the managers go in and just approve the time, it's all just inputted, actually, employees can put their hours in too.
No.
You don't want that, yeah, we're not doing a time clock, that's why, yeah.
Well, we're not doing.
We could though.
And, and, well, we're not going with paychecks, paychecks would actually be more like thirty.
Oh, I see, so, right, right, so I'm thinking about paychecks, like what, you know, I've used in the past.
Yeah.
Hourly, fully backed to log in, log out.
Yeah.
You're just gonna go in and put in the hour.
Yeah.
And boom, it spits out all the stuff.
Yeah.
I don't object to that.
And what's the the fee?
Two thousand eight hundred thirty seven dollars a month, it it's per.
Two thousand dollars a month?
No, per year, sorry. There's a whole fee schedule here, but, um, it's twenty seven ninety five every time you run a payroll, so.
Twenty seven dollars ninety five, so.
Yeah, twenty, twenty six times a year, and then there's a check charge, uh, and actually, it's when I calculate that, and plug our current numbers in there, that portion would be one thousand three hundred twenty three dollars a year. And our permanent delivery, payroll reports, one hundred fifty six dollars, and then there's a charge for per W two and quarterly reports. And.
Just did, wanted to just give Bob a talk to the.
If we didn't do this.
We're gonna have to decide tonight, what's the more expensive option, trio or the?
Well, trio would be more.
Well, if you want, Bob, we'll put the trio amount in, just for a placeholder.
Well, what I'm getting. Is, they, they did not like the idea of going offsite to print checks.
They, they won't, I'm going to be printing the checks here.
Then why are we using?
It's different software, that's all. It's just different software.
I'm going to be, pretend, say it's a division of trio.
Yeah.
Okay, so I go in, I get the time cards, I put the time, the hours in, or the question, or whatever. I enter them into the software, you guys approve it, I submit it, they will do the direct deposit, and they keep all the tables, so they figure out the taxes, and I have a net, so I cut the check for the net amount. They take care of all the taxes, they do the tax filings, they do W twos.
You're just doing the net check.
Yeah.
So, so that's describing with the payroll service, correct? If it was with trio, what would be different?
Um.
I think that's what Bob.
Okay, if if it was with trio, what I would have to do is, I would have to go in, and I would have to do do the payments to the tax, to the IRS and to the state. Yeah.
Oh, maybe, maybe, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, you know, I respect a lot of what Eric says, I've got a lot of information him from him for the last couple of years, but I'm willing to consider that, just because they do it, doesn't mean we have to do it.
Well, I'm getting this also from Belgrade. They are very.
I wish you'd mentioned that, I was at a birthday party with Anthony Saturday, I could have asked him.
Well, he's not very, don't ask him.
He's on his way out.
Don't, don't ask him any treacherous questions.
He's on his way out.
He doesn't know anything about the treacherous work. Yeah, Nick is the one to talk to.
Oh, Nick, cool, yeah, either of you.
Both of them.
Listen, it's getting late tonight, yeah, I, I will. Worst case, we put the amounts in the budget.
There's enough in the admin for that.
Yeah, all right, so, um, I feel like there might be other business, but it's late.
It is late.
Anybody have any urgent other business?
Just a quick warrant question.
All right.
Um, I was looking at last time, do we need to, and I saw your email, oh, thank you, um, do we need to include this? How thousand five hundred for Village? Okay.
By the way, the guy that did that work, Ignatius, he's.
Oh, really?
Al Hudson.
Oh.
Passed away recently.
Really?
Yeah, I don't know if his company's still around, because he was, he had other employees, A. Hudson.
Yeah.
You're not sure what their status is, they designed our, yes, which I don't know, I'm crazy about. Yeah, salt shit, but, and he he was actually the guy that did the municipal setback system design in the eighties.
Hmm.
Yeah, he knew it well, so, you know, he was, he basically, he knew that he had health problems, and a couple, two years ago, he said, no, I'd love to finish this work here on the ground, that's what he told us. All right, so anyways, uh, anything else?
Ben said, would, I can get you on, I can show you payroll man. They're taking all the liability of keeping up with the, um, different laws and feelings, it's all in in our control, but they're taking liability, and I'm going to be printing the checks here.
So, they they have, oh, no, they don't, they don't have any of our information, then. And they don't have our check stock.
They don't have our check stock.
Okay.
They, they will have our, our payroll information.
Well, that's what they do, they're bonded, that is. It doesn't matter, I don't care who it is, personally, I like, you know. ADP paycheck, payroll, whatever.
I've worked with payroll management and, um, advantage and paychecks.
Yeah, they're all good.
And they're all the same, I.
There's only one, they went badly up and never paid the federal government anybody's taxes. Entities like us that were screwed.
Mainly paychecks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so is there any other business?
No.
All right, so I'm gonna motion to go into executive session pursuant to MSRA, one, MSRA subsection four, five, six, A, personnel matters. So we are going to leave the Zoom meeting, and there'll be no further business. Oh, there we are, so everybody on Zoom, thank you so much for joining us tonight, or listening on TV.